Go ahead.
Yeah, but see, you know, this, if you get rid of that and then modify this sentence to not impose a time issue, but preserve the authority of the citizen to not just have bad code official and it goes everything down and it goes everything to the end of the change, so code official and whoever are such emergency, we can modify it anyway, but I don't know that that's necessary. You don't, you don't understand what I'm saying, or you still preserve what would have affected the lives of...
Uh huh. Without, no problem.
There's two opinions.
Yeah, two opinions, that's one way of thinking about it, or, you know, come up with a word for it, that means, uh, required you to do something more stringent than anything, I could come up with, like some of a sentence where it's, you know, the requirement to do it higher than this thing, so that's not...
He says, right, he says it's...
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council for Tuesday, January 4th. First item of business is the approval amendments of December 14th and 21st.
So move.
Second.
No, so far it's, it's good. It's not the actual meeting.
We have an appeal of Rashawn Figures concerning the Architectural Review Board's denial of his request to replace windows and doors and install a mural at 809 Government Street.
Could we get an update on that, please?
There's no need, I'm gonna table it.
It's gonna be table?
Yeah, I, uh, talked to Rash, talked to Rashawn and, uh, asked him to talk to the MSDC and, uh, okay, y'all are happy with everything? I, you gotta yell, I can't hear. Y'all are happy with everything? Right, and it's my understanding, he's said that he'd do whatever you guys told him to do. Okay, I mean, you gotta yell, I can't hear down here this morning.
All right, thank you.
Request for a waiver of the noise ordinance at 3404 Moffett Road on the first Friday of every month in 2022 from 6:00 to 9:00 PM.
No problem.
And a waiver of the noise ordinance at Lyons Park Avenue on January 17th from 1:00 to 4:00.
It's good.
Okay. Public hearing, today's a public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Davanya Stahlworth doing business as DMS Carrier to operate a sedan service, and to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to April Johnson, Johnson, doing business as Kids on the Wheel to operate a sedan service.
Do we know if she's gonna be here at that public hearing?
She's been notified.
Okay.
Any problems, Mr. Scott?
Yeah, that, if I'm not mistaken, that's the one that's got the previous traffic citations, a significant number of them, that I wanted to ask her about before we approved this, since it is transportation related.
Was there any issues, um, of safety?
I don't have the one back on April Johnson yet, but the, the first one, uh, did have a number of traffic citations, uh, in their five, five-year driving history, so I should have the one for April Johnson before the, uh, 10 o'clock, 10:30 meeting.
Thank you.
If there was any major issue, if you can let us know before meeting, that'd be great.
Will do.
All right, thank you. Final clerk.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. David Sank wants to speak, thank the council for contributing to the marching Cougars Band, and Reggie Hill wants to speak about redistricting, reapportionment, ARP funds, and the Public Safety Act best practices. Ordinance held over, 52-034, ordinance to mention section 52 dash 31A of the city code regarding emergency action in the abatement of unsafe buildings.
Can we talk about that one for a minute, 'cause I'm not clear on what exactly this is and why we need this?
Uh, Mr. Archer. Turn your mic off.
This was a, uh, initiative by Mr. Richardson back, you know, back in October, that had stemmed from a, uh, emergency teardown of a, a building over kinda near I-65 and Spring Hill Avenue, and, um, he had proposed an amendment to the ordinance, 'cause he felt like this was a known problem, property that had been known for years, and why was it all of a sudden an emergency? And he wanted to impose a additional condition that if it had, if, basically, if it's been a known danger for over 120 days, that, uh, there would be some council action prior to, uh, going forward, because, um, basically, it just felt like they were bypassing the council to put it out, really.
So is the council aware of these actions prior to where this teardown would, would happen?
That probably depends on the situation. I don't think you necessarily automatically get a notice, but, um, you'd have to ask Mr. Dogma or something about that.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Gregory.
I don't remember all of the details on this, but I do remember some discussion about it, and I believe Mr. Doggenbaugh had spoken with us about it at the time this initially came up. Um, I don't know if Joel or CJ remember details, um, but it seemed, if, if I remember correctly, that there was a lot of discussion about there was no need for this, because it was a duplicate, duplication of efforts to some degree? Okay. David is, is here, maybe he can come down and go up.
My, my recollection, uh, Mr. President, my recollection is that this was kind of a one-off event, and, uh, it happened in the wrong district, and, uh, Mr. Richardson felt like some remedial action was necessary that would put these additional steps in place.
Mr. Dogg, I want to speak on it.
Is it working? Okay, perfect. Um, just to back up a little bit, Mr. Richardson did have a concern, but I, I don't believe that concern is valid in this case. And the reason why is because within the property maintenance code and city code, we have provisions for emergency demolitions, which this location on Smith Street did meet. Now, yes, we were processing it through the normal demolition tract that should have come before city council, but what happened is, after our initial inspection, the roof collapsed. And that is very important, because it changed the condition of the structure. It put pressure on the exterior walls of that structure, where they would have, or potentially could have crossed the property line. We're looking at three feet, which is a substandard setback on this street, so that we have three feet to the property line, another three feet to an occupied structure, which that structure had a door on the same side that the exterior wall, that now has pressure from the roof that collapsed, was pushing against it. The structure next to it, to the south, was occupied. Not only was it, is it occupied today, it had a handicap ramp up to the front of it. So we can assume we have a restricted access person with a wall that's about to collapse that would have hit their property. So it did meet the condition of the criteria for emergency demolition. So we have a structure that has high potential of failure crossing property line that can cause injury or death to another one. The criteria also applies if it could fall into the right of way and damage or hurt somebody. The action was determined that we needed to take immediate action. Once we determined that it was an emergency demolition, it took us six days to hire a contractor and have that emergency condition removed. At the time that we took this action, we did notify city council, but no, city council was not notified in advance. We did have to take that action for the protection of the adjacent persons that was occupying the structure. To the north, there was another structure, but it was not occupied, but it still did meet the condition of emergency demolition, which compelled us to move forward with the action that we took.
Carol.
No, I'm...
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Pan.
And so the only reason why I didn't, um, come before council is because the roof collapsed.
That is...
So it's already something in place for that.
That is correct, and, and it, council will see before it nuisance abatement actions for securing and demolition. Sometimes we have a combination, very recently on Congress Street, where the, the resolution was to partially demolish an addition that was collapsing and secure the rest of the home. So we have combinations that come before the council. However, those have components, roof, exterior wall, foundation components, that are failing. But in the inspector's opinion, and in this case, before an emergency demolition can happen, we have two, my project manager, Gary Jackson, who is an architect, and we have the chief building inspector, Todd McClung, do separate joint investigations to verify that it is imminent danger of collapse where it could cross the property line.
Thank you.
Any other council members?
I'll ask that we move to table.
What's the reason? David, is, is this actually needed?
Uh, Mr. Carroll, we, we've used this in the last three years, three times. So ninety, well, majority of them will come to council before demolition occurred, but yes, it is needed. From time to time, we do have structures specifically in the downtown area where the setbacks are men, are substandard than what is required today for new development, where we may have a foot, a two feet between the structures, and we have a structure that is collapsing.
Are you talking about zero lot line, like it occurs in historic districts?
That's, the, the best example, yes, but in this case, on Smith Street, we had a three-foot separation, six feet total, between the structures.
So it shouldn't be tabled?
No, it, it, I'm sorry, let me speak up. I think, I think there's some confusion here.
Yes.
We want this to be tabled, because, for two reasons. One, you got, uh, what, what Mr. Adafenbach is talking about, what we need is, we need the ability to be able to take care of emergencies. That's used sparingly, we very seldom use that. But the more common sense approach is, you are looking at creating liability by holding up something that's actually emergent and having it come before council. There are some things beyond both the council and administration's control, both time and gravity, that's how something becomes emergent. I mean, we wouldn't hold up putting out a house fire, the same way we wouldn't hold up pu, putting off a demolition if it's emergent. So that, that's what, that's what we're getting at here. So there's the practical application, 'cause we sparingly use emergencies. Most of the time they come before council, you'll approve them every week, demos and securing. But the more critical part from the legal basis is, you're looking at having something that turns into an emergency that could harm either property of the adjacent landowner or her harmed people, and then we're waiting, knowing that it's emergency, we're waiting to come in here and make a decision about something that is imminent. And most of the time, it's not imminent. We have state law and the ordinance that we follow specifically before we actually go into an emergency teardown. Like Mr. Adafenbach said, it's probably three times a year.
Mr. Darle, should you concur with that legal assessment?
I would say, why, why don't you just table it and see if it becomes a problem again? And then revisit it if necessary.
That's, that's fine.
All right, Mr. Davis. It's gonna be Mr. Carroll to Ms. Gregory.
I can wait up.
No, 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 I'm, that, that's fine, and I think when David was answering William's question, it was confusing, because he was asking you if it's needed, and it sounded like you were saying that the amendment was needed, whereas you were saying, no, the amendment is not needed, but the ability to do the emergency work is needed.
All right, now we're clear. Is, is it needed? So the amendment is not needed?
Correct.
Correct.
All right. Now, going back to the Nuisance Abatement Act, and I think I had this conversation this morning, um, ten years ago, I requested that we write an amendment to the Nuisance Abatement Act that had to have some state legislative involvement, where it gave us the ability to act against the owner, where the, either property manager or the lease, leasee of the property, or leaser of the property, is not doing his due diligence in maintaining the property. That is the amendment that I'm looking for. Now, at one point, I was writing that, and I left, and it needs to be completed. So I'm gonna ask, um, that we complete that section and get some state help, because we can't enable it without the state also making the same, uh, additions and corrections to its, uh, nuisance abatement section. And Flo, I guess, I know you probably remember that, but it really needs to be done, because we cannot do certain things to property when necessary.
Any other...
That's all I have.
Any other council member? Final clerk.
Consent resolutions held over, 4939 and 4940, declaring the structures at 1003A and 1003B Baltimore Street of public nuisances and order them demolished.
Mr. Dogg, yeah.
Yes, Mr. President, just an update, both locations, uh, when it was here last at council, they did, the owner did get a, a permit to repair. Repair operations have been ongoing for the last sixty days. The conditions that warranted a demolition are no longer present, even though they're not finished with their securing operations, I, I would recommend we table this, both applications, today.
And you believe that they're gonna finish?
I, I believe they're gonna finish the securing of the houses. Do they, are they planning to completely renovate at this time? I don't believe so. But they will have them secured, and if they do not comply with the property maintenance code, we'll follow up with the environmental court action.
All right, thank you. Final clerk.
Resolutions held over, 081121, approve item-based bid for 2022 Mardi Gras Rose. 081122, approve purchase order to Lumpkin and Associates for Personnel Consulting Services for the Police Department. 091123, real, reallocate funds from CIP Fund.
Mr. Chick.
Yeah, Ms. Marne.
Yeah, um, in regard to 091123, reallocate funds from CIP Signal Wide, or Citywide Signal and Assessment. Last, uh, meeting, we approved approximately half a million dollars for something very similar to this, and that money came from our capital improvement, CIP, uh, $250,000 from District Four, and I guess, whatever the difference was for the other two districts that were involved. And it's my understanding, this CIP money, or, or this reallocation, this money's been sitting around some time, and instead of spending it on the thing we spent our CIP money on last week, our last meeting, we're now gonna reallocate it to a, I guess, the Greenway Initiative, which is a, certainly a worthwhile project. My concern with it is that, why wasn't it spent, why couldn't we have spent it in District Four with $250,000? And I've requested some additional information, because I really don't know what the CIP Fund Citywide Signal and Assessment project is. I just don't have a clue what we're reallocating money from to this Mobile Greenway Initiative. So, um, I'd ask, and I spoke to Colonel Delap about it, about getting something to me so I can understand it a little bit more, because the way I see it is, we're, we're essentially taking money out of the District Four CIP and putting it in the Greenway Project. That's the way I see it. For what projects?
Yeah, Mary Ann, can you give Nick your mic?
Sorry about that. There was, uh, these funds were outside of the council, the council CIP, the $3 million for that, and what's happened is, effectively, with a lot of the coordination with ALDOT, a lot of those efforts were done with those, those signalized, uh, those projects that you've seen that have come. There were coordinated efforts with Traffic Engineering and ALDOT to interconnect the signals, so a lot of that work got, it basically got absorbed in, in, in that effort right there.
Right, so, so that's my point. My point is simply that, is that we had, um, $400,000 set aside for some signal improvements, signal assessment for Citywide.
That's correct.
Which includes the same exact thing, same exact items, that we spent CIP money on from District Four two weeks ago, which is Government Street, right? So that would be inclusive of this same money, right?
That, that...
So, so I, I'm, my concern lies in that, here we are, having already allocated money for those very projects years back, right? Whenever the Citywide Signal and Assessment happened, however many years ago, we're now saying, well, we're gonna do that on the backs of the CIP in District Four, for those roads that are in District Four, rather than use the money out was originally allocated.
That's a fair assessment, but let me re, talk with Jennifer and find out a little bit more. Obviously, this evolved over, over several years, I don't know why, that, that there might not, I don't know why there would maybe be an opportunity to use this $400,000 for those matches. I don't know, I'll have to get you some more information.
Yeah, please, and I'd request that, and I, I'd like to see that, please. Uh, and I, I don't want this anyway to my colleagues here to, or, or anybody on the executive branch to think that I don't see the Mobile Greenway Initiative as a worthwhile project. It, you know, that, that seems like a very worthwhile project. I just, um, don't know that it, it rises to the level to, to be done on the backs of the folks in Four, where we could have spent that $250,000 on something else within our district, our, our district, you know?
I'll see what else I can find out from them, but I mean, I know the effort, effort basically just never materialized, probably for a number of different reasons, overlap with ALDOT efforts, and then just, you know, capacity to deliver, deliver more, more undertaking. But I'll see what, what else I can find out for you.
Okay, thank you, and then you may hang tight, this is the next one.
Yeah, just out of due respect to our clerk, and also to the safety badge, just wanna ask that all speakers should speak at the podium on top, please. Final clerk.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Mr. Carroll.
Uh, Ben brings, uh, to point a, a, a longstanding, uh, question that this, this and the previous council and council before that always had about capital projects. Uh, is it possible to write the mayor and administration a request for a balance of all unexpended funds on all completed capital projects?
We can, yeah, we can provide a balance for all unexpended funds and all completed projects, that's what you're asking for.
No, not, not a balance on un, unspent funds on completed projects, not projects that are started.
Okay, yeah.
So, uh, you know, the, the rule is, in all municipal and government projects, a project cannot start unless, unless it's fully funded, and a lot of times, those projects are overfunded, and at the end of the project, the fund balance is not returned to the general fund or to the capital budget. We don't see that.
Yeah, in fact, I'm glad you brought that up, because that's something we do on a pretty regular basis, at least here in finance. We look at all the projects out there, we look at the age, we look at the amount, we look at whether or not the activity is complete, or whether it's incomplete, and at what point will it come to complete, and, and we try to make determinations of what that extra fund balance could be used for, uh, going forward in the future. And that's kinda what's happening in some of these cases, too.
Would you guys please add that to the monthly financial report, so that the council will know and will have an idea of what's out there that's unspent? Therefore, when items like the $250,000 come up, we may gingerly request that those funds come from that unspent balance.
Mr. Carroll, we'll get you the initial reports, and we'll discuss how the report going forward, okay?
Thank you.
091124, reallocate funds from Capital Project Reroof Area-City Facilities to the General Fund Forestry Contract Labor, $500,000.
Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. President.
Marne.
Pretty much the same issue with this one. As I go back and look at the City of Mobile 2021 CIP for District Four, how we allocate our money, there is a project on here for this very item, it seems, and that is the, the rerouthing of the BIC, the Adult Centers, Zale Road Complex Adult Center, $250,000. And, again, it, it's coming out of this CIP, and, and it appears, just at my, and I, again, I don't know what the Project Reroof Area-City Facilities is, I, I just don't know what it is, but it appears, just in my reading of it, that the same exact thing has happened again, in that we're pulling $250,000 out of funds that are allocated directly to District Four, um, whereas there appears to be $500,000 already aside, set aside of Citywide CIP money for this very thing. So, struggling to understand it. I, I really would like to see what the Reroof Area-City Facilities is, before I can say yea or nay, you know, if it makes sense for the citizens of District Four, so...
So that fund, and I'll, Mr. Delap can chime in here, is, um, actually set aside annually to reroute facilities due to unexpected damage to the roofs, and so if we back up one year to Sally and Zeta, that's how that money would be used, because we had a relatively light storm season, there's residual money in there that didn't get used because of any roof damage unexpected, and so, uh, it's being moved to Forestry, so that we can improve the ceiling height of the limbs, like along Government Street, you've probably seen us doing that, so that we don't have the 18-wheelers hitting the limbs, and that really came to light when we had two Tahos that were just, had the roofs ripped off when they were bringing them in on a car carrier. The other thing that we were having trouble with is making sure that we can access all of our neighborhoods with our large ladder trucks from the fire department. So, again, the money was unencumbered, not being used in the roofing for emergency repairs, and is being moved over to Forestry.
Well, and, and I wanna make it absolutely clear on this one as well, that the, the tree, what, what we're doing with this $500,000 is absolutely necessary and vital to the city's, you know, successful operation. That's not what the concern is, and I, you know, I would suggest that we even fund the, um, the trees at a higher rate, you know? But it, but it, this does raise concern to me, and I think the citizens of, citizens of District Four as a whole, when we're spending $250,000 to reroute a facility, we've got a fund that's set aside for roofing-related projects at half a million dollars, and we roll $400,000, I mean, $4 million in November to the surplus. So, you know, I, and, and underfunding tree contracts. So I, I've got a bit of concern with that, because that surplus money eventually is gonna be spent, you know? I just, and, and, you know, I don't wanna get in a big surplus debate here today, but I wanna be clear that Citywide money should be spent in District Four, just as it is in One, Two, and Three.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Dave.
Let me ask, let me ask, uh, either Mr. Amberger or Mr. Delap, what I understand we're talking about here are the monies that appear in each district's CIP to go to Citywide projects. Is that what we're talking about?
So there's, there's a, a balance that we have, uh, for Citywide rerouthing?
That's not, Mr. Delap, let, let me, let me ask this question. When, when we started the CIP, there was a debate in the council, and it had to do with, well, let me go back, when we, when we passed the extra penny, and there... When we, when we passed the extra penny, and, uh, there was a, there was a uniform agreement that the extra penny should use, be used mainly for capital projects, should be, should be set aside for capital projects. And we had a debate about the two methods by which we might do that. Uh, my opinion at the time was that it ought to go into one pot, and we ought to start at the worst problem in the city, wherever it was, and work down that list. Because as Mr. Amberger has pointed out repeatedly, there are some projects that are just too big to, to be covered by one district's CIP. And so maybe we could have done Baltimore Street all at one time, or Anne Street all at one time. In the event, uh, hardly breathe inside this mask, so take it off while I do this. Uh, in the event, what the council decided to do was to take $21 million of the thirty-something million that the, that the extra penny raises, and divide it seven ways, and have $3 million going into, uh, a CIP for each district. Uh, and, uh, as an aside, I've come to believe that that was the correct decision, although at the time I was opposed to it. But, but what that did at that point was, it really, and, and we're talking about eight years ago, at that point, it really didn't leave any money for these citywide projects. And there were a number of, for example, buildings in District Two that, that, that the council specifically agreed were not District Two responsibilities, but were citywide And so we set aside within each district's $3 million, certain sums of money for citywide projects, because there would have been no money otherwise for these citywide projects. There would have been no money to put a new roof on the convention center or something like that. Um, now, my understanding on this discussion that we're having today is that the money we're talking about is money that is either allocated or left over from those citywide allocations in each district's CIP. Is that correct? Okay. But, but the point I'm trying to make is, it's taken me a long time to get there, but I think the background is important. The point I'm trying to make is that the, the allocation in each district's CIP for citywide projects was never intended to be allocated equally amongst the seven districts. It was always intended to be used for citywide projects, wherever they might occur.
So, so that, that's, that's correct. So, the citywide allocation, it, that, then it's four million per year is what goes on, on addition to the twenty-one, it's four million per year that goes for the citywide facilities. There may be, you know, a bunch of projects in District Two, there might be two or three in District, it, it, it's, it's wherever their most urgent and pressing need is to use those funds to make those repairs. There are buckets within that four million that are roof repairs, there are other repairs that we have set that money into, and we draw that. That balance had stayed fairly stagnant, and we could not expend that, uh, at the rate in which we had a fund already built up. So when we needed, had a shortfall in this, in this case in the urban forestry, we said, let's reallocate it from that pot to this, because this is a more urgent need, knowing that we will replenish it in the next year or so with additional funds that is there. In addition, in each of the three, three million dollar, there are small amounts, fifty thousand or things for urgent repairs specific to your district that stays in your district. Uh, but the other ones, a citywide pool that we use based on requirement and need, and it could, it's not balanced evenly across the district, it's based on the need, wherever that may be.
Right, right, the most urgent need. Now, now I think it's important, uh, Mr. Amberger, to, to separate, separate these, separate these two pots out, so that Mr. Reynolds knows, you know, what we're talk, which pot of money we're talking about. And I, I think it'd also be helpful if there is a, if there is a pot of money that doesn't relate back to the district CIP, yeah, to the district, if there is a pot of money that doesn't relate back to the, uh, district citywide project allocations, that, that that not be ended, that, that when it shows up on our agenda, it doesn't show up as the CI, it doesn't say CIP on it, because we see CIP, and we're thinking, we're thinking, we're thinking us.
Mr. Davis, I, I appreciate your, um, questions there, and, um, again, I, I think the, the citywide signal assessment, I'm sorry, the Mobile Greenway Initiative, which is what we're understanding a citywide project, right? That was not, that is non-inclusive of the citizens of District Four, other than their, you know, going, their use of it whenever they go there. The, and this is on the, of, the first agenda item, the, the signal and assessment was in fact inclusive of citizens of District Four, in that Government Street, which we just approved $250,000 for last meeting, you, you see where I'm, where I'm going, is that we, we, we put money there from our, our district-specific CIP, and money could have came from things that were already allocated, so that's, for that one. And then as far as prioritizing roofing repairs, it, it rose enough to the priority to make it on a CIP list. Matter of fact, it's scheduled to, it's underway, I think, or will be very soon, at least, that's my understanding of it. So, I'm, you know, I, I'm just saying, why wouldn't it be a part of, of this money? And, you know, i- if we need to fund trees, then we need to fund trees. You know, let's, let's fund trees out of the, the money that we're rolling over, it's a contract, you know, we're, we're issuing contracts for this stuff, it's not like this is gonna be a, a recurring annual expense going to operations, it's, it's a, a contract for cutting trees. And I, you know, again, I, we got more than half a million dollars worth of tree work that needs to be done, you know, we, we probably got, I don't know how much, it's a lot more than $500,000. So, saying let's, let's fund it, you know, absolutely, but let's don't fund it on the backs of other projects that were being done, especially in District Four.
Where? Mr. President?
Mr. Carroll, Dan, and you, Dave. Okay, thank you.
I'm still kind of confused about, about the issue, but I'll be happy to talk to you about it offline. That, that, I, I do have a concern that I want to voice, uh, with respect to, and I'm sitting here digging deeper into it. On the zero nine eleven twenty-four, the intent of the council, when we passed, when we, on the two occasions in which we have ex, uh, extended the penny, is that the money, we allocate it into different pots, but the bulk of it goes into capital, was that the money be spent on capital items. Now, what it appears like, what it appears to me is that we're moving money, half a million dollars, out of a capital pot into an operating pot. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I, 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 I don't understand why we're doing that.
Well, I, I guess, this is, this is, I'm glad, I, actually, I'm glad this has come up, because this is an issue that, uh, has been getting some attention on the part of the administration for some-
I'm sorry, Mr.-
I said, I'm glad this came up, because this is an issue that's been getting some attention, uh, I think, uh, more recently. You know, we have a capital budget that may have over a hundred projects going on at any one time. And, uh, and, you know, and in my estimation, you know, some of those projects get completed on time, some of them struggle, some of them we have priorities changed because of other emergencies that may come up. Uh, we try to sit down and look at our capital budget spending by project on a periodic basis to see, are things moving, or is capital being tied up for something that's really not moving forward? And in a case like that, we try to say, okay, is this project really gonna take place, or is it not gonna take place? And if it's not gonna take place, why? And if it's still not gonna take place, can we use that money somewhere else more productively? And so when we, we, we begin to identify those things that potentially could be used elsewhere for something that's more important, that maybe was not as important at the time the budget was prepared. So, in this particular case, we've had two instances come up where we have some projects that have to be done, that need to be done, particularly the trees, and that probably is going to require more money as we go on. And we see that there are other things where we have a lot of capital allocated to it, and it's not yet moving at the pace that we thought it was. So maybe to make better use of the funds that have been set aside, we, we decide, okay, let's take this money, or a portion of this money, and move it to this project that we know needs to be done right now, and we'll reevaluate the, the amount of money that is, is originally put in this other plan, that may have been there for a longer period of time. And then, and that's trying to make better use of the money that we have allocated for the capital budget, rather than letting it sit, sit idle. Because at least in my perspective, there's nothing worse than letting money that's been designated to a project sit idle, when it could be used for something that's more productive and something that's more immediate than, than was expected when we first put the budget together.
Yep. I think your question is, why are we going from capital to operating? Because it existed as a line item in Forestry to handle these small contracts, to get contractors out to lift the canopy up, or help us with some of our forestry needs. It could be done either way, um, but because it already existed within the operating budget in Forestry, that's why we identified that.
I, I, I just, I have a philosophical objection, actually, several philosophical objections to this. The first is, and, and when I began this monologue a while back, I talked about how at the beginning I thought we should just stack all the projects wherever they existed, and that my colleagues didn't want to do that, they wanted to separate it seven ways, and how I'd come back around to believe that was a good idea. And here's the reason I thought it was a good idea, after I'd studied it. Because the tendency in government is for money to move from capital to operating. There's always gonna be more immediate pressure for public officials on the operating budget. There's gonna be more cries for spending in operating. There's gonna be more people that want to do things, there's gonna be more hiring, I mean, all of this pressure to increase the operating budget, and, and if, if your revenues aren't growing sufficiently, then it's only one place it can come from, it's gotta come from capital. And that's what we saw happen to this city over an extended period of time. We saw, we got to the point where there was nothing in capital, it was all going into operating. When I ran for office the first time, uh, eight, eight years ago, um, we were spending hardly anything on capital, on infrastructure. Uh, Chief Barber, the two, when I would give my ride-alongs with the police officers, the first cab I got, the first cruiser I got into had 185,000 miles on it, and the second one had 135,000 miles. The garbage trucks and the trash trucks were broken all the time, half the, we were spending nothing on capital, and that's because everything had leached from capital in operating. And, and, and that tendency is not gonna go away. That tendency is not gonna go away, it's gonna, it's gonna be in effect here, every other municipality, state, and the federal government. Uh, so, I, I think, I think we need to draw a clear, hard line about this, and, and when the council, when the council allocate certain funds to capital, they need to stay in capital, because it's a thin end of the wedge, and if we start moving capital into operating, there's no end to that. And we're in about the same place we were ten years ago. I, I'm, 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 I'm trying to be, I'm not angry, I'm just adamant.
Um, Mr. President?
Mr. Carroll?
I was gonna let Joel finish that one, he was doing great. I mean, I, I, actually, I was gonna yield, because he asked the question that I was gonna ask. Uh, the, the last thing to this is that a reallocation means that it stays in capital, goes from capital project to capital project. If it goes from capital to operations, it requires a budget amendment and not a reallocation. So, yeah, yes, don't shake your head. Uh, matter of fact, uh, the leaching of capital that Joel talked about, I was on the council for eight of those years when we barely had a capital budget, because we were robbing capital, get back into the operations budget. Uh, before that, I was on several board of directors in the city, when Mike Dow was actually, uh, uh, mayor, where the same operations were going. So I think that our capital, as we have gotten it to this point, need to kind of stay with capital. And if we are gonna have a budget amendment where we take items from capital operations, then we need to note it as an amendment to the budget, because it's no longer capital, it's become operational cost.
Gregor?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. And, um, I agree with Mr. Davis and Mr. Carroll both on this, because I too remember the days when we had very little capital, and we were constantly robbing capital to, to pay for operations, to keep the doors open. And when we agreed to the extra penny, and then we set up our ordinance for the $21 million to go to, to capital with a couple of other distributions, it was our intent that it go to capital. And I think what this council is saying, that with this one reallocation here, which is capital, if it was reallocated to strictly capital, like street resurfacing, or ditch repair, or sidewalk repair, something along those lines, citywide, we wouldn't have had anything to say about it. Um, so I think that's what our concern is, making sure that everything goes by how we set it up under the ordinance, that capital stays in capital. Now, if you're trying to tell me that working on the tree canopies is considered capital, that may be a bit of a stretch, it sounds more like operational in that department. Um, so at any rate, I'm just saying that I agree with what my colleagues have said, unless you've got something that would, um, show us otherwise.
There's, just, I think we're all in agreement, uh, with what, everything that's been said. To, to clarify, and, and it, I should have picked up on it in the agenda earlier, and it's probably my fault for not noting it, is that there is a line item in the general fund to do routine maintenance of the tree canopy. But what we have learned is that about every five years or so, we need to do a capital project where we award a much larger contract to go do a more holistic effort throughout. So in other words, we do routine stuff that's in the general fund line item, but then about every five years, we need to spend about a million plus to do a multiple contracts, to do significant amount of trimming that our crews and other small ones can't do. That was the intent here, was to move that and keep it as a capital project, and that's why it was reduced in the budget from what the original request was, because when I met with Forestry and John Peavy, I said, look, we're not gonna increase the budget to a million and a half dollars every year, every, you know, year after year in the general fund for tree trimming. That's a capital project that we'll do once every five years, because that's about the rate they said they would need to do it. There will be about a half a million or so in there. That was the intent, uh, and I think we just, and here it says, moving it to the general fund. Now, if that's the line we wanted to put it to, that's fine, but just so you know, that's kind of the goal, is to, is to head in that direction.
It says general fund on there, so you can see why we would be-
It did, it did, and that was, and that was, we probably should have made it sure that it was stayed in capital as a capital project, to do this, uh, every, you know, five year. And I didn't pick up on the fact it said general fund, I should have noted that when, when it first came up.
Mr. President?
Mr. Reynolds, then Mr. Dave.
I, I, again, want to make it known that trimming these trees, along with another double the amount, is a worthwhile project for the city. It's the sort of projects we ought to be spending our money on, I mean, these are the things we should be spending our money on. Um, but I go back to my original concern, and that is that we're spending capital dollars on a roof replacement, and there is now $500,000 out of a, a re-roof various city facilities going to something else. So I, I, again, this is a worthwhile project, something we should be spending our money on, it shouldn't all be, be done on the backs of, a big chunk of it on the backs of the citizens of District Four, or the, the BIC, Adult Center.
Dave?
President?
Dave.
President.
He called you.
Yeah. Oh, he did? Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Reynolds. When he first started down this road, I thought he was gonna get the best rich nitpicking award, but, but he's focused my-
I am, I'm in.
But, 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 but he is, but he is focused, he's focused my attention on this item. So, thank you very much. You know, tree trimming, it's not, I, I, and I have the highest respect for Colonel Lap, but tree trimming is an operational expense. And I don't think you turn it into capital just by calling it capital. It's, it's, it's op, in my opinion, it's an operational expense. And, uh, I just don't think we oughta be spending capital money. Now, if, 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 yeah, yeah, it's for bricks and mortar, stuff like that. Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Uh, hold on, Dave, finish, finish.
Yeah, no. You wanna go?
Go ahead.
Um, I definitely agree with all my colleagues, I just wanna get some kinda clarity and just some, some understanding. So, we get $3 million, our CIP. If we don't use all this budget, what happened to, to that leftover?
It is, um, it stays within your district CIP.
So, we don't move to operations, or?
No, sir, no, sir.
Okay.
And if it's, um, if it's your CIP money, it stays in your CIP. So, if it's residual money, um, it'll go to another project within your district that you, you identify.
Okay.
Not the case with the allocate, that's not the case with the allocation to citywide projects.
Not the citywide, th- this is, this has to do with, you're talking about the 3 million CIP that each district has.
Yeah.
It stays within your district.
I'm just making sure that it's not crossing over.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Reynolds? No, as we have spoken last month's time for a CIP meeting. It was, it's time for a CIP meeting, we need to go ahead and get that scheduled. I think, um, you know, very soon, and everything, especially to look at the ordinance and everything. The current penny does expire in September of '23. So, if, if any changes that we want to make or amend the, uh, current ordinance, we need to do so, and, you know, start looking at it anyway. Anything, anybody else?
Mr. President, I, I got one more question, I hate to belabor it.
Yeah.
I, I, I can't help but sit here and think, but this, this whole line of discussion and questioning, it wasn't but a few weeks ago that the administration stood and told us we had a 40-plus million dollar surplus. Where do those funds go, and why couldn't those surplus funds be utilized in this operational expense? Versus pulling it away, 'cause I'm, I'm, I sit here and I have discussions with constituents and colleagues, and year over year, we have capital projects that don't get done because we don't have funding. And here, you know, like my colleagues have, have shown, we've, we've got a significant amount of funding that could take care of a significant portion of capital projects that have been delayed, um, when we have operational funds that, that have come in. So, I'm just wondering how those revenues did, or in excess of what our budget was, why those couldn't be used for some of these expenses we're seeing that are being reallocated versus, you know, putting them towards true capital projects that need to get done?
The, um, general fund surplus is actually a combination of revenues, unexpected performance as far as revenue, and then savings in our expenses and our operational budget. It's our preference that if we have residual funds left in either capital that are already allocated either to capital or to operational expense items, is that we reallocate that money, rather than go into the surplus, to allow us to accumulate the surplus for projects like you just passed the $30 million to the MAA terminal. And so, we are looking at that surplus for the larger capital needs of the city, and not trying to pick away at it, if we can avoid going into that surplus. I don't know if that answered your question.
And, Mr. Reynolds, if you can go ahead and get that CIP, uh, meeting schedule. That's what we really can get, really, understanding also, see, do we need to amend it also at the same time? I think the administration, work with the administration, make sure they can get it at the same time, and go with everybody else. Uh, Mr. President.
Yep, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Gregory.
Do you, you want to suggest how we handle both of these? Uh, maybe layover 11-23 for more information?
Yeah, we can.
And then for 11-24?
I'd suggest we table that.
11-24, I mean, I'd, not as, as proposed, but, I mean, I'd like to see us fund it, you know? Not, uh, if, if there's another opportunity to fund it from a different bucket, ideally, I think, um, I think we'd all probably be satisfied with that, from a, from a general fund perspective.
Um, do you wanna just table this, so that they can come back maybe with a different funding source? Done in a different way? How would you like to handle that one?
Let's, let's hear what, uh, Chief Staff Barber says.
Yeah, it, it was actually my preference to fund it within the general fund, by looking at areas that we are underspending. The, the problem that I ran into was that we're so early into the budget, I didn't wanna move money around in the general fund until I see what kinda performance that they're gonna have. To your point, Mr. Reynolds, the 500,000 is inadequate to handle what we're trying to do. It was merely to keep the work going until I could identify money in the general fund through surplus, uh, to be able to put more money into the forestry for the canopy. So, looking at it, early in the first quarter is when this decision was made, to get the funding so that we can continue the work until we can get the money in the general fund. So, if you're asking us to go back and look in the general fund to see where we may have surplus, we can do that. Um, it's just that I won't be able to, to do any work, we haven't been doing any work on this, uh, because I wanted to keep the work going until we could see where we had savings within the general fund. I'm not sure if that, but that is our preference, it was just so early in the fiscal year, I didn't wanna put, uh, Public Works in a bad situation by moving funding from one item to another, until we see how that performance is.
I, so, tell me this, is, is, and I, I agree with you, I don't wanna hold this, our, our tree contractors up either. I mean, this is important, like you said, glue the tops off some tahoes, we don't wanna keep that going. But, is a week's time enough for you and your staff to get together to see if there's something, you know, Mr. Holt and, and, and the team can come up with, uh, to fund this thing? And, and maybe there's an opportunity, maybe you find that there's a, an opportunity to fund it at a higher rate, you know, while you dig around.
Yes, if you wanna hold over, we'll, we'll be glad, we're a little further along in the budget now than we were when we made this decision. I just didn't wanna cut anybody's line items in the first quarter. And so, if you want us to go back and look and scrub it, so we can move money in the general fund and leave this in capital roof, we can do that.
But if you do that, though, that would require a different, um, resolution.
That's right. Uh, if we move within Public Works Cost Center, then it wouldn't require council action at all.
Well, but this particular one, though, the way it's written, general fund, so this particular one, I'm just saying would need different wording for different resolution.
Well, if you're asking me to, again, if you're asking me to keep it in capital, we can create a capital, a project, and just leave it within capital, and I can continue the, the contracts. We can just not move it to general fund. If that's the preference, we'll amend the, uh, we'll amend it.
It, it's not a capital expense, and we can continue the contracts, we just need to, to change the language. And, and that language change is in the house.
So, what, I guess I'm not quite sure what language changer.
Yeah, let's, let's, we're in the weeds now, Jim, I mean.
Because it says general fund.
Yeah, we're in the weeds now, I mean, we can clean this up without doing it right now in front of everybody, it'll be easy to do.
Let's hold it over for one week.
Yeah, I recommend that we hold this over for one week, because it's 10:08, and we have a meeting at 10:36, I was meant to go.
Yeah, if, if I could, Mr. President, just, just to say that I spent, I think, over an hour and a half with the, uh, with Jim and the capital team, I think, last week. We're probably light years beyond where we were eight years ago.
Oh, my goodness.
You know, some of us are, are, I mean, I remember those times. So, I, I have to commend you on what we have accomplished over the last eight years to get where we are, compared to where we were. So, I mean, even though sometimes we make mistakes, we've come a long, long, long way. Uh, and a lot of times with brand-new eyes looking at where we are compared to where we were, sometimes we don't actually see everything that we've been able to do.
All right. Madam clerk.
21-11-25, authorized contract with Shepherd Services for cooling tower pump replacement at the Mobile Civic Center. 21-11-26, contract with Micor for Skylight Film Replacement at the Gulf Coast Maritime Museum. 21-11-27, authorized contract with SPV Associates, doing business as On Indus for E-Builder Professional Services. 21-11-28, authorized professional services contract with Tanya Dixon to provide lessons in clinics at the Tennis Center. 31-11-29, authorized application to the National Legal Cities in support of the Southern Cities Economic Inclusion Initiative to develop a plan for diversity, equity, and inclusion within the city of Mobile. 60-11-30, 11-31, and 11-32 are approved settlement agreements and release of claims for Wilkerson, Farrell, and Lee. Consent resolutions being introduced, 03-001, concurring the appointment of Brian Hune, Mayor, to the Mobile County Board of Human Resources.
Uh, yeah, I got something on this one, should be brief. I, I don't understand what we're concurring in the appointment of this gentleman for. Is this appointment put forward by the mayor? Go ahead, Mr. Harlock.
Under state law, this board, uh, these boards are supposed to be one in every county, are appointed by the county commission, but in counties where there's a city of more than 60,000 people, uh, it's a, supposed to be basically a joint appointment by the city council and the county commission. Who thought, you know, this particular appointment up, I have no idea. I'm really not sure what this board does, but that's how the appointments work, it's a joint.
Okay, I don't know anything about, this is my, I don't really know anything about it. I withhold consi- consent to be, for next week, of course, on this one, to give me an opportunity to know what I'm voting on. So, read that one separately.
Unanimous consent, yeah, okay.
37-002, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer, table wine, off-premise, this only license for food mar- meat market on Fertile Street. 60-003-
We're gonna hold that over for one week.
60-003 and 60-004 determine appropriations to the Child Advocacy Center and Azalea City Community Development, serves the public, public purpose and approve payment. Resolutions being introduced, 08-005, approve purchase order to Stryker Sales Corp. For three-year service plan for 43 Lucas cardio chest compression systems for the Mobile Fire Rescue Department. 08-006, approve purchase order to UJ Chevrolet for pickup truck for Mobile Police Department Cyber Division, $55,256.50. 08-007, approve purchase order for fuel for the Wave Transit System. 08-008, approve purchase order to STONES for one-year subscription, 140 licenses for Monday.com collaboration software for MIT. 08-009, approve purchase order to STONES for one-year subscription for 120 licenses for Monday.com collaboration software for Mobile Police Department. 21-010, approved contract with Reed Fire Protection for fire sprinkler and backflow preventer inspections and repairs at various city facilities, $26,235. 21-011, authorized contract with TAH Power Systems for emergency generators, preventative maintenance, and repairs at various Mobile Fire Rescue Department facilities, $71,050. 21-012, authorized contract with IET Systems for a security barrier at the Mobile Alabama Cruise Terminal, $88,535. 21-013, authorized contract with Southern View Media for digital marketing and design services for public safety candidate recruiting. 21-014, authorized contract for nuisance beaver control services, $9,600 per year for three years. 21-015, authorized contract with Potagold Rentals for portable toilets at various city locations, 31-016, authorize a grant application to Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation in support of safety equipment for the Mobile Fire Rescue Department, $23,233.68, no local match. 37-017, approve a certificate of public convenience and necessity to DeTanya Stallworth, doing business as DMS Carrier, to operate a sedan service. 37-018, approve a certificate of public convenience and necessity to April Johnson, doing business as Kids on the Wheel, to operate a sedan service.
Is, is this a separate application from the one we had held over?
A public hearing.
Okay, I, I got you, I'm tracking, thanks.
60-019, 020 and 021 are approving settlement agreement and releases of claims, Johnston, Brandon, and Gaines. Call for public hearing, 41-022, call for public hearing to consider the revocation of the business license of Hussein Abdullah, doing business at Discount Zone located at 507 Azalea Road, and this is scheduled for January the 25th. 41-023 is call for public hearing to rezon property located at 118 Kilmarneck Street, from R1 to B2, scheduled for February 1st. 41-024, call for public hearing to rezon property located at 117 North Catherine Street, from R1 to B2, also scheduled for February 1st. 41-025, call for public hearing to rezon property located at 2621 Ralston Road, from R1 and B2 to B2, also scheduled for February the 1st. Announcements.
Anything from the council? Anything from administration?